This is my formal meeting for December eighth, twenty twenty five. Copy of draft minutes for November tenth, twelve, eighteen, nineteen, twenty four and twenty six meetings have been posted on the city website. Half of the community reports have also been posted on the city website. Two communications, one is sidewalk improvement district twenty twenty six budget, which council members should study because it's going to be up this with this month. And the Columbia County Board of Elections has election results. So we're going to have quick reports and then a after the reports, we will have a executive settlement. Let's get the reports going and we start with the fire team.
All right, beginning and end here. All right, we had thirty calls last month for those were fires. One was down the smokey fires down the waterfront bathrooms. Two more building fires in mutual aid districts. Uh, one was burnt food. Uh, we had one motor vehicle versus pedestrian accident out of the car bike up on Harry Howard Avenue. Bike bike path up there by the firm's home. Three hazardous condition calls, uh, two smoker odor removals, one was a hydraulic leak in the CMH. The other was a burnt food from a prior night that they smelled the next day when they came in there, so. Uh, one good intent call and then nineteen false alarms. And here, you're about three eighty-three for a year. Probably gonna break four hundred again. Uh, we're over about four or five hundred now, where when I got in, we're about three fifty. A lot of the lawyers, so getting busier as the time goes on here, Mark. So that's all I got.
Well, that was short and sweet. Any questions from the council? Any questions from the public? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Next, Calvin, Youth Department presentation.
All right, good evening, council. So last week, I'll start on the first slide. Just wanted to, um, feature some of the film from that that was created in respect to the youth department. This was featured last week at Spark of Hudson. And so I just wanted to, um, show you guys a portion of the film and encourage you all to watch it fully.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yes, we're playing roughly ten minutes.
We may not have an issue where I want to play.
Because I'm guessing we should be there now. I think it should be going through here, but it's not. Okay. It's not how it's getting lost. All right, well, um, well, nonetheless.
I should point out, um, I think it's a great film partly because I'm in it. But, um, it's everybody should watch it, especially if you're a council certain.
Um, so, so again, that, um, that link to the video is within the PowerPoint, so I heard urge everyone to watch that. Um, and so we could jump back into the PowerPoint. Slide two, and so, um, this is an overview of, uh, all of the I mean, in second, third, eighth, and our programing. Just, uh, there are condensed, um, slide here, um, and just to recap, November was a pretty, uh, busy, busy month for us at the center. We're able to, uh, hold off our fall festival, kind of lend itself to our open house. Um, that went very well, huge success with our families, programmers, and partnering organizations that we collaborate with throughout the year, uh, and community members alike. And so it was a real, uh, real fun event. Leave us, um, the opportunity to showcase and celebrate, uh, everything that our youth have accomplished. Um, and so it was really a good kind of a, not, not quite a send off of the year, but, but leaving it up to. And so the next slide, um, on the left here, that was, uh, one of the showcases from Bendelstir Circus. Um, our kids, uh, they're, uh, still walkers. We had some eem cyclists. And to the right, that is one of our members in the, um, fire department gear. The fire department came out with the truck, let the kids explore the truck, put on some of the equipment. Uh, so it was a really fun, uh, interactive day. Um, we also had other things going on, had a hip hop dance performance with some of our, um, students in the, uh, in Lindsay, uh, Vulners class. We also had an art display with, uh, some of the youth. Um, and we also had some of our little school kids who made, uh, veggie chili for the event. So again, it was a, it was trying to showcase to show, um, the talents of our students. To the left, um, that's some of our youth at the Hudson Sandwich Shop. Christopher Pugh, he's been collaborating with us, uh, for the past few months. Um, really just being, um, uh, of service to our youth. They arrive there to get, uh, free, you know, free food. And so, uh, this was their opportunity to explore the food truck. And then to the right, um, we brought some of our kids to the rehearsal of the Little Murder Made production at the high school. Uh, one of our very own staff, uh, Damian Virgo was also in the play. He plays Sebastian. Uh, so, uh, to the right there, it was some of our youth, uh, attending that field. Um, next we have, uh, Y B L basketball. So basketball registration is, uh, come to an end. And so, uh, we have roughly a hundred and forty-eight kids signed up, which we, we anticipate that number will climb just again, technically when we close, kind of get those, those late, late, uh, registrations. And so we did make room to get those folks involved. Uh, but again, as of today, we had a hundred and forty-eight kids signed up. This is an indication of strong, um, community engagement. It's also, as I mentioned many times, it's a feeder program to Blue Hawk Athletics. So it's within reason for the kids that were with us in sixth grade to have made the modified teams in seventh and eighth grade. Uh, it also shows a high demand for structured youth programming. And that's something that we try to remain committed to. Uh, and it's, you know, I think it establishes trust with our families that we're able to provide, you know, a safe uh, environment and one that offers quality athletic experiences. So moving forward, we'll, we'll be, um, creating teams, coaching assignments and scheduling. And so that's something that folks can look forward with our basketball league. Again, we're always looking for volunteers to help improve this program as well. Next, we have, uh, some staff student recognition. Uh, to the left there, we have, uh, Marianne Van Alstine. He is a first grader. This is year two with us. Um, Marion came to us as a very, very quiet, reserved little guy. Um, as you can see there, uh, golden smile. He's, uh, certainly become more outgoing and, uh, engaged with our, with our staff. And so, um, really happy to see him up there. Uh, Kayla Hawkwood, you guys may recognize that photo. Kayla was our staff of the month, um, last year. And she's continued, uh, to really, uh, do a great job. She was awarded staff of the month again. Uh, Kayla is a high school senior. Um, we would love to have her come work with us after graduation, which is still a possibility, but Kayla has plans to go on to college. And so we want to, um, help her, uh, along that journey as well. And then to the right, we have Zaden Perry. Zaden was our student of the month for third through eighth program. Zaden is a fourth grader who's been with us roughly, let's say about three, three, four years now? Three, four years. And so, um, Zaden, he's, he's, uh, consistently in program, shows up with a, a really loving, uh, kind of energy. And he, yeah, he's a really awesome kid. And so, uh, again, you feature us. Oh, come on here. I don't know where that was. Let's move to the next slide. And just wanted to wish you all, you know, happy holidays on behalf of Hudson Youth Center. Um, you know, again, we are going to continue to feature different, um, events involving community. And we'd always like to see our, our council members there to support it. And that is my report for the evening.
Thank you, Calvin. Any questions, council members?
Yeah, always.
Thank you. You as well.
I'm blank. Okay, we'll make the move and fast. Next up, uh, Catherine Miller.
Uh, I'll start by saying Chief Franklin is back. She just got back, but I figured I'd finish up the, uh, rest of the year here. Um, so I'll start with the section nine reporting. We had zero defensive action reports for November. Uh, we had four mental health calls and we had zero overdose incidents to report. We had thirty-eight arrests for November. We averaged about ten a week, uh, with sixty charges. The officers, uh, wrote ninety-three traffic tickets for November. For our body worn camera, uh, reports, we had no issues with them. For our parking, we issued for November, three thousand two hundred and three tickets for November. Um, two thousand four hundred and sixty-six tickets were paid in November. So our revenue for November was a hundred and ten thousand, six hundred and sixty-nine dollars and six cents. And it was up three percent from last November. Uh, just so you know, parking's going to start this month, removing the meter heads from Orange Street because we're all, we're going to the kiosk and the, uh, the digital. Uh, other than that, the, uh, incident, we had an incident on Winter Walk. It was a busy one this year. We had actual accidents, but we had a man enter a business on the three hundred block of Orange Street with a knife. Um, they called nine one one. We were able to respond there. He had left prior, just prior to us getting there, but he had dropped the knife, so our officers recovered it. Our officers went to his house with me, uh, determined who he was, and he had another knife. So the officers had to tease him. Thank God no one was hurt. They were able, H P D was able to get him in custody with the sheriff's department's help, but we brought him to C M H for, uh, mental health. That's an ongoing investigation, so I'm not going to speak much more of that at the time, but I'm just happy that no one got injured. Uh, that's about it for my report for November.
Questions from council members?
Captain House, how, can you, um, hold on? Have you gotten in November as it starts opening up?
That'd be.
At the warming center?
I, I don't know that off the top of my head, how many calls we had. I know we have had calls there, but I, I don't know the exact number.
I'm sorry, Catherine, any questions?
The warming center, how many times have we responded there for instances? We have, I just don't know the exact number.
Margaret, you have a question?
Yes, I do. Um, so, uh, since parking has been against your recommendation last no, last month, uh, parking on, uh, is now free for the month of December. Uh, what exactly are the folks who are charged with, um, doing the parking enforcement? What are they doing for the month of December? There, there, there are two, like, they're part timers, but what are they doing in the month of December now that there is no parking meters?
For this month, they're going to be removing all the meter heads off of Orange Street and the side streets. So that's going to be, that's going to take some time and so a lot of work. They had to remove them, pick them up, bring them down to D, D, D P W and this and that. So that's going to take time. And then they've been doing, doing general like enforcement for no parking zones, handicap zones, that kind of stuff. So there's work for them to do for sure.
Are they still going to the hospital in your?
Yeah.
Handicap parking?
Thank you, Captain Miller.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Catherine.
They already start moving the metering, are they good? They are going to start.
They removed the ones from the municipal lots already.
Okay.
So they're all gone, but they're going to start doing the actual Orange Street and the side streets off of Warren. But, you know, it's a lot of work and then D W has to take the poles out and all that. And so it'll take some, it's going to take some time.
Uh, Jennifer, you have a question? Online, are you a candidate?
Yes, I, I have a question. So when they take the meter heads off, are they replacing some of the meter heads with caps so that they can put signage?
Yeah, some of them will stay because the signs will go up, but not, but not all.
Right. So maybe every seven or ten spaces, something like that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much.
Of course.
Are they, um, I know at one point the plan was to keep the meters at the handicap parking so somebody can, you know, it's easier to access right now. Is that still the plan to keep at least the meters in the handicap parking spots?
No, that, I don't know where it will.
I said no.
No.
Yeah. That was one of the plans because it would be hard for somebody in wheelchair to.
No, we planned like.
Yeah, but right now, right, until we do a total transfer. And, yeah, yeah, yeah. It is right now until, you know, until we do the transfer and not everybody, you know.
Then you're suggesting leaving the meters.
Just at the handicap.
On the handicaps. I'll at least get them removed last.
Exactly. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Just because as that transitions, right, it'll be very difficult if someone doesn't have access to, or if they want to pay their tolls.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you, Catherine.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Calvin is, you know, there's Campbell, who's online, there's a way to move him down. Catherine, our, uh, council is also online. Heather?
Yes, I'm here. Uh, I unfortunately do not have any documentation to share with you today. Um, I basically spent the last two hours on the phone with our I T guy because, uh, my computer got hacked and somebody, uh, very cleverly, um, almost got themselves a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar wire transfer today. So, um, I did take a quick and, and as part of the fact that I got hacked into also, the report that I generally generate got, um, bastardized and all the charts are gone. So I did not have enough time after all of the tech to be fixed to do anything. I did take a quick look at the numbers and there's really nothing substantial that has changed in any of the, the regular numbers that we, uh, do. Once I get it figured out, I will update it retroactively and send it out to everybody. I guess, uh, so in addition to that, the key things I would want to mention are, um, we did in fact get, um, our audit finally completed. Um, it has been issued to the majority of entities that require it, including the federal clearinghouse. Uh, and both the regular financial statements and the, uh, federal single audit and the Department of Transportation's single audit, all three of which we had to do this year, are up on the website, uh, for people's perusal. Uh, I can delve into it a little more detail, uh, in the next meeting. I think everybody's aware of, you know, the, the single most compelling thing, which is the general fund took a one point three million dollar loss in twenty twenty-four. Um, so that's just something that we're trying to be mindful of. Uh, and like I said, we can go over that information in more detail next year if people are so interested. I'm also happy to sit with anybody who wants to delve into the numbers on a more detailed level. Um, you know, feel free to reach out to me and we can set up a time to review. Uh, in terms of foreclosures, we, uh, finally got all the pieces together. So this week we will be issuing, and by we, I mean the attorney, uh, Frank Bruno of Bruno and Levine. They will be issuing a demand letter to the people who remain on the foreclosure list. That list is now down to approximately either sixty-nine or seventy people. Um, it's about two for, two point four million dollars of outstanding, uh, collections, of which about seven hundred thousand is, uh, penalties and interest. And the balance is, uh, the original property tax, which as we all know, has already been recorded in revenue at its particular, you know, in its particular year. So, so that's not new revenue, but the penalties and interest will be. Um, in addition, in that mailing, um, and if anybody wants any kind of more information, please reach out to me in terms of, you know, if you want information for your constituents. But in addition to the demand letter, there is also a, um, a one sheet that I pulled together that talks about the original and the revised installment plans and what the basic terms are. So people know that that is potentially an option for them. And there's also a brochure from Galvin Housing Resources that offers free, uh, foreclosure counseling to property owners. And so, um, I've actually asked and, and was given some additional of those brochures for us to hold in our office. So if we have taxpayers come in and they're at risk, we actually have the brochure that we can hand out to them as well. But that whole packet will be going out this week at some point. And then housing resources will be following up with their own, uh, not solicitation because they're not really trying to solicit business per se, with their own offering letter, uh, reinforcing the fact that they offer these free services to taxpayers, um, that are at risk of foreclosure. Um, it's, uh, you know, it's, it's, it's a wacky time in, in the City Hudson Treasury between that and, uh, the new software we're trying to get. We had to get the delinquent school taxes in the system and, and letters put out. And you may have seen some complaining about getting letters that, uh, they, that were not accurate. That is in fact true. That is because, um, Bank of Green County collects and Bank of Green County, uh, apparently collected for a period of two days and did not, uh, render any of the collections to our office to let us know that they had made collections and paid. So there were probably, I'm going to say about twenty properties that got letters saying that they had outstanding taxes when in fact, uh, Bank of Green County had collected it, but not, uh, let us know. So I think we've handled all of those, uh, people at this point. Um, so that's, wasn't a great thing, but I think it's been resolved at this point. Uh, the next big challenge obviously is again, this is going to be the first year that we're trying to issue not only the new tax bills with the new software, but also with the new S I D feed that's never been done before. So, um, yeah, it should be fun. Um, and that's all I have off the top of my head. I will tell you, I will actually spend two minutes just in terms of the scam, just to let you know what happened. Uh, I was expecting an email with a link in it, uh, that I had to click through in order to verify a document that had to be uploaded to the federal clearinghouse. This was related to the audit. I was on my phone in my car traveling, trying to get this done while I was on vacation. I got an email that had a link saying, hey, here's a link. You need to verify your thing. I thought it was the link that I was waiting for. Turned out it wasn't. It was a spoof. Uh, they were able to get my, um, Microsoft Office login because they asked me to recertify my login in order to, to get to, uh, the, uh, upload site. Um, and from that point, they were basically able to start sending emails out under my city email address. Uh, they were very smart about it. They reached out to the bank. They had an email that purportedly was from me introducing my new finance administrator by the name of Mike Fleming. And Mike Fleming followed up with the bank a few months later, a few days later, um, asking about the process for wire transfers and went through the process of becoming a signatory and submitting a request for a wire transfer of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, we, we are, uh, very, uh, I'm not going to say fortunate because obviously it's all intentional, but we have a number of, uh, safety checks in place for something like this. So I have to submit something. They call, they have to verify it. It has to be verified by a second person. Um, and so, uh, between the bank's diligence and our diligence, we were able to make sure that it didn't happen. But it was clever enough that it was sending emails out, uh, presumably under my city email address, but then also C C ing them with my city address. But then they tunneled into my Outlook and created a rule. I don't know how familiar you are with Outlook, but basically went in and created a rule that said, basically said, anything that comes in from this guy, immediately take it out of the inbox, put it over in this folder over here that nobody looks at, and then immediately stop processing anything having to do with that email. So it's getting clever. They're getting very, very clever. I'm obviously pleased that we had all the elements in place to thwart it, but, um, yeah, that's, that's, that's not great. So I just wanted to share that with you because I know other people have been getting emails. I probably get one or two or three every month from, you know, either a council member or a department head asking for information because they want to change their direct deposit. We're pretty familiar with those, so, so we ID, we ID those pretty quickly. But this, this was a, this was a, a level above, so just wanted to share that and ask everybody to be diligent.
So Heather, it wasn't ransomware. It was actually targeted from?
Yes.
So it wasn't like a ransomware? No.
No.
Right. Okay. And real quick, what, any update on Paddock, please?
Uh, the, yes, uh, the only update I have is I did receive last week, I received the document we needed from Andy Howard, the city attorney, uh, in order to proceed with the, um, auction. Uh, I just have to update it with what the current amount do are. We just have to set a date and then, um, determine how we're going to get the communication out there that there is in fact an auction happening and a property available. And I'm, I'm not quite sure how we go about doing that. Usually there's someone else involved and there isn't this time, so. But yes, we're, we're making moves on that.
Thank you. Jennifer, you have a question?
Yes, is, is there a way to find out who, who actually is responsible for this and a way to prosecute them?
Um, I know, I know the bank is going to continue to pursue that. Um, we did have, we've had a couple smaller incidents in the past where, um, it was much, you know, much lower tech in that somebody intercepted checks that were off to a vendor and literally, you know, used computer graphics program to change the payee to themselves. Um, um, with our help and with H, uh, H P D's help, we were able to actually identify that person and prosecute them. Uh, so we will obviously do a, we will do whatever we can to try and find this person. Uh, but according to the I T guide, there were, there were emails originating literally across the globe. So, you know, they're obviously, you know, they're interconnected and using, you know, all sorts of.
So can, i- is there a way that, to get the federal government involved to figure out who this person is or? I, I don't know.
Cause I mean, I, I will.
This is crazy.
Yeah, I, I agree. No, I, I will definitely ask the bank. Obviously they must have, uh, more experience in dealing with this than we do. So, um, I certainly plan on following up with them. And they've already said that they're going to continue to pursue it, but I'm going to ask them what the other, you know, regular approaches are, so.
Okay.
Good idea.
Appreciate it.
Margaret, you have a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment to Heather. Uh, first of all, I'm really sorry that you had to go through this and well done for handling it the way you did. That's all.
Yeah, thanks. But thank the rest of my team and thank the Bank of Green County too, because it really was a, in all, all hands in effort.
Okay, very long. Uh, Rob Perry. Are you there?
I'm here. And I'm here. Windows green. Oh, shoot. Come on. Oh, my God. The hell did I do? My share. Windows. There we go. Okay. Sorry. Um, so, uh, septic revenue for October was sixty-three thousand, eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Um, I thought that was a, a pretty high amount, so I did check it against, uh, our historical values. And that was the single highest month that we've had, uh, during the tw- oops, the twelve years or so that we have been receiving septic revenue. So, and I just created a little list with the top ten months and you could see that most of them were, you know, the last couple of years. Uh, next, and we're at, right now, we're at a, a twenty twenty-five budget was five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for revenue. And right now we're looking at meeting that, potentially exceeding that by about ten or fifteen thousand dollars. Um, in two thousand seventeen, or two, I'm sorry, two thousand seven, we received a consent order from D E C about the sewer plant and not being able to manage operations or able, you know, not be able to meet the requirements of the speediest permit. And so in two thousand ten, we spent twelve and a half million dollars upgrading the sewer plant so that it became compliant. And, uh, that project was finished in two thousand twelve. And two thousand thirteen. And 2013, we submitted the information to DEC requesting that the consent order be lifted and we'd be issued a new permit that basically matches what's in the plant's capability. That didn't, nothing happened. We received an administrative extension in 2015 and nothing happened and nothing happened. Until about two years ago, when DEC said, okay, now we're going to start looking at it. We had to resubmit everything using, wasn't just resubmitting the the preexisting, it was, you know, generating all new information. So it's two years later. And we know that basically they've created a draft of the new speedies permit. There is a public comment period, I believe. So I've uploaded the documents that DEC sent to the city on the DPW's webpage, and it's under a category called Speedies Update. There is a number, a phone number and a contact name at DEC if anybody wishes to provide comment. It's James Eldred and his number is on my report that is that accompanies this, the picture show here. And it's also available online. So anyway, one of the, there are two things that are standout as part of the new speedies permit. One is affluent sampling. So this is, every time there's a significant rain event, we have that chlorine contact tank that takes everything over 6 million gallons. It does get hit with chlorine, but there's going to need to be an automatic sampler attached. So that way, when that happens, it actually grabs it. So that way we were able to physically verify whether or not there's a chlorine residual or not. And so that's not a huge undertaking, you know, it will be technology, it'll, you know, require upgrades to the systems and and so forth. The the one, the other one that's a little bit more major. Right now, the edge of our process is the chlorine disinfection, which I've circled there in the top. There'll be actually a new process, which will be declor. That is the chlor, the the sodium hypochlorite does the disinfection, kills all the remaining bacteria. But just before it goes out, it's going to have to have another chemical chlorothiazide added to it that will basically kill whatever chlorine is left over. These are new discharge limits. Everybody else is under them already. The difference is that it's, you know, it'll be an entirely new process with an entirely new chemical to store, new chemical container, new chemical feed system. So this, you know, this will probably be a bit of a capital project. As part as of the the, you know, the what they proposed, they've also given us the proposed schedule compliance. So, you know, from the time that they make the decision to ratify this this permit and assuming the changes, these remain unchanged, you know, we're going to have two hours to put the design documents for DEC approval for a lot of these upgrades. And then from that point on, we'll have another two and a half years to actually do construction. So, you know, we are looking at some changes to the treatment process and and this is all at the plant itself. It's, you know, obviously the stormwater separation project is dealing with other compliance issues out in the system. So this is something that we can expect more, you know, for you to hear more about in the upcoming years. The the water department, we did some pipe cleaning of the transmission main. So this is the pump that the city owns. We purchased this about 10, 12 years ago or so. And so what we do is we actually use the pump to take water from the the creek. And we use that to pressurize the main so we can push the poly pig through and it goes all the way through. This is a a structure on the Wiltzik Manor. And the pig pops out of here. At this point, we switch it from a 16 inch to a 12 inch because of the different reduction in the size of the main. But, you know, you can see how kind of nasty the water is. This blows out into the ground where it will return to nature. As part of the spool piece, you know, what happened is every once in a while that will, they just start to wear down. So, you know, this is the coupling that we use to hold the piece to slide out of the way so we can remove the spool piece to get the pig in and out. When we were putting it back, you can see there was a little where I circled, it's twisted a bit. So, you know, the inner lining became unusable. We just replaced both of them at the same time because there's no sense in just doing one when they're, you know, they're both of the same age. We want everything to be consistent. As far as you know, and Heather just gave us a detail of the security cyber issues that that she went through, which we'll have a meeting with Homeland Security and Department of Health, I believe sometime this month. It hasn't been scheduled yet, but, you know, Department of Health and Homeland Security are taking very proactive and actually going out to facilities to assess what we have for cybersecurity. This, for us, it's obviously it's not about hacking to get any kind of confidential files. You know, the intent, it would be that somebody would would hack to modify our process to try and make the water either not produce it or make it undrinkable, non potable. So it's a, you know, a similar kind of threat just for a different outcome. So that will take place this month or early next month. As DPW, just, you know, year end projects, come November, the asphalt plant closes down. So we try and get whatever we can done in the street. This is over a Willard Place. There's kind of a lot of drainage that's been popping up for a number of years. We've tried different solutions. This was a little bit more involved. We actually excavated down, installed a drainage structure. At this point, they installed a bloning drain to feed the drainage structure to get all the surface water and groundwater directed to the drain. You can see here where, you know, at that point, we blacktopped the restoration to create a swale to capture any surface runoff and the stone along the side is the front strain to grab any of the water that runs off or is going subsurface, subsurficially. So that project's done. There's no more street work now until the asphalt plant works, opens in April. Anything that we do in the streets now will be emergency related only. We did have our first storm of the season last week. So, you know, we have about four to five inches. Here's a loader filling up one of the trucks with salt and we have four large trucks. They each hold about six to eight ton of salt. So, you know, we use them throughout the throughout the the meat of the storm and, you know, we probably put about 100 or so ton on the roads. But, I mean, that's, you have to attack the storm when it's coming down. So that way the roads are nice and clean a day or two later, which they are. So it's a cost of doing business in the Northeast. The, just a quick little thing about refuse. So I, you know, I had a discussion with one of our local professionals last month. And it was about the world famous garbage bag vending machine. And, you know, I was questioning why everybody seems to be so preoccupied with it. And so her question was, well, why do we, why do we sell garbage bags at all? And it's not the first time I've had that question. So this is what happens right now. Which many people don't realize is that Columbia County solid waste, whatever you throw out in the blue bags we put in the garbage truck, we haul that to the county transfer station over on Newman Road. They charge us in real money for everything that goes over the scale. We get charged $128 a ton per for garbage. And we get charged $90 a ton for recycling. So we do have a revenue source for the garbage. We do not have a revenue source for recycling. It's a cost center. But so what is a, what's a ton cost? Well, if you figure out, if you divide it by, you know, 2,000 pounds, then, you know, once you, you take a 15 gallon bag, if there's 30 pounds of garbage in a 15 gallon bag, then at $2, we break even. We break even for, well, we pay the county. That doesn't go towards any of our own payroll. It doesn't go towards any of the fuel or maintenance of the trucks. It doesn't go towards the equipment itself. It's just 100% pass through to the county. So, you know, the the question was, well, why do we sell them at all? Well, if if we don't sell bags, first thing is we have $100,000 worth of revenue that disappears. So even what we what we do today were to remain unchanged, we would have to raise taxes by $100,000. But we know a lot would change. First of all, all of our residents that have these are going to say, well, why should I pay $45 a month for a 90 gallon container when it's free? So every single one of those cans that you see throughout the city will disappear. And you can see there's a lot of bags in there and that won't change. So now you could figure that the amount that we bring, which is probably about seven, eight tons a week, is going to go to 15 or more than 20 tons a week and we're going to charge for that. So, you know, that's going to be an increase of a couple hundred thousand dollars a year. You also have to ask whether or not the businesses are going to say, hey, we pay taxes too. You know, so how do the dumpsters go away and do we have to collect all that? You know, you can figure there's another 100 grand in tipping fees. You're also going to have to add a crew and another truck because the volume is going to exceed eight hours a day, just like it did, you know, many years ago when the city had a dump. So, you know, the short of it is that if we stop selling, you know, right now we sell the garbage bags because that works for a niche market, which are those people that, you know, do less than 15 gallons a week or 30 gallons a week. Obviously, these higher volume users have a different option that suits them. So that's that's the the short of that, why we charge for garbage bags. The vending machine is there because we used to have, you could only buy it with cash at City Hall from the hours of 10 to 4. Now you can buy it at 2 o'clock in the morning if that's what fits you. And that's all I have.
Okay, Rob, the first question is from Barbara.
Okay.
Yeah, so Rob, I just going back to your first, one of your earlier things about the declorination.
Yes.
The state, are there any great grants or monies available from the state to help address that?
Well, obviously we're going to look for that. You know, I don't, I don't know. I would think there there should be, you know, we've got grants for, you know, we built the, upgraded the sewer plant. That was $12.5 million. We have $6.5 million in grants for that project. So and this, you know, the stormwater separation project is $66 million and we have $50 million worth of grants. So I, I'm hopefully, you know, optimistic. We've got a couple of years to find it if it's out there, that's for sure.
Okay, good. And with regard to the garbage bags, my favorite topic. I mean, obviously I've been looking at this for years. The revenue generated from the sale of the bags equals about half of the cost of actually dealing with, you know, picking up and tipping fees and so forth. We could maybe think about selling stickers rather than bags because that might reduce some of the cost. It's not going to be a huge thing.
There's a cost, yes, a sticker costs less than the bags, you know, and you wouldn't have necessarily the folding cost. You know, so you'd save. However, I could tell you what's going to happen. As soon as you do that, the people are going to take a sticker. They're not going to buy a 15 gallon garbage bag, even though they bought a 15 gallon. They're not going to buy a 30 gallon garbage. They're going to go to Harrington's and buy a 10, a 10 mil 60 gallon contractor's bag.
I do actually know that. And and the, when you look at the breakdown of the cost of the whole bag business, I think maybe two years ago, the whole folding of bags was $15,000. So it was not like the biggest problem that we have. So yes, I get it. I get it. Yeah, more on the bags to be to be discussed.
Oh, yeah, everybody's favorite. I don't even think it's about the bags. I guess it's the machine.
Yeah, Rob, hi. On the septage, what capacity are we at now?
Well, we're maxed at 50,000 gallons a day. And, you know, that we don't really, you know, our max days are usually in the in the 40,000s anyway. And that that limit is a regulatory limit imposed to us by DEC. It's not a, it's not a physical limit of the machines. But right now, we're, if you want to say what our capacity is, we're at 100% because we have all of the vendors that have expressed an interest. You know, we've had some that go to Albany. There are some that go to Poughkeepsie. There are some that come exclusively to Hudson. There are some that split. So, you know, we're available to a dozen or so haulers and, you know, they 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 choose to come as they see fit. So.
Okay.
Thank you.
Questions?
Sure.
Okay, thank you, Rob. I need a motion in a second right now. The executive session, we have three different things we need to discuss. Juan, Gary, all of the vendors, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Tell them for the purpose of discussing pending and potential litigation.
At that, both.
And contract negotiations.
And I'm sorry, and union negotiations. So, okay.
Stand and yell someone who thinks they're going to lose. Be that.
Do you want to do union or would be?
Union first.
We may need to, and there are negotiations.
Yeah, look through, this list goes down. The meeting's locked.
Okay, that's fine. If Heather wants to pay, it's fine.
We're not recording. Let me stop recording.